Welcome to the V O C C meeting for June 25, 2019. I'm John Hutchings, Chair of the Board, and to my left is Vice Chair Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Ty Mensah. To his right is La Bonita Bomar, the Clerk of the Board. To her right is Ramiro Chavez, the County Manager and Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. With that, we'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Gary Edwards.
And in turn, I'm going to ask God to lead us in the pledge, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And is there approval of the agenda today, or move a motion, rather?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda for today. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Tuesday, June 25, 2019 agenda. Any additions, amendments, polls, changes?
No.
Nope. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. They have an agenda. And a motion to approve the Board meeting minutes from June 11, 2019.
I would move to approve the Board minutes from June 11, 2019. Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any changes to the minutes?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Takes us to presentations, and first is Public Works, introduction of a new Fleet Services Manager, Monica Gorman, Solid Waste Manager. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Gorman, and I am the Interim Central Services Director. I am here today to introduce the county's new Fleet Services Manager, Bruce Warbaugh. As Fleet Manager, Bruce is responsible for 14 employees, 696 vehicle and equipment assets, an annual operating budget of around $4 million, and an equipment replacement fund of nearly $16.4 million. And before Bruce comes to the podium, I'd like to tell you a little bit about his educational and work background. Bruce earned a bachelor's degree from the U.S. Military Academy at West Point and a master's degree from Stanford University in Physics. In addition, Bruce is a graduate of the Command and General Staff College, which is the U.S. Army's Leadership Program. He also completed the U.S. Military Academy's Master Teacher Program and the Army's Maintenance Managers Course. Bruce served for 18 years as an Army Officer, attaining the rank of Major before he retired. He was trained as a helicopter pilot with an emphasis on fleet and equipment maintenance and logistics. Bruce's experience includes two years as Commander of an Aviation Maintenance Facility at J B L M, where he supervised 325 active-duty employees and 150 contracted mechanics located at J B L M, the Republic of Korea, and Afghanistan, which gives new meaning to trying to manage your employees that are spread all around the world. While at J B L M, Bruce also served as a logistics officer for a brigade of over 3,000 people and a $65 million budget. In this role, he gained experience with budget development, facilities management, asset management, vehicle and aircraft maintenance, and contracts administration. Prior to retiring from the military, Bruce spent a year as a maintenance analyst, measuring and reporting on the performance of an aviation brigade and making recommendations to leadership. After retiring, Bruce was hired in 2016 as Thurston County's Fleet Analyst, and most recently, he served as the county's interim Fleet Services Manager. In this recent recruitment for the Fleet Services Manager position, this recruitment was highly competitive, and Bruce emerged as the top candidate. So I am pleased to introduce you to the county's Fleet Services Manager, Bruce Warbaugh.
Go Army!
I feel like I should be standing.
Had a good year last year. Hopefully another one this year. So, thank you. My name is Bruce Warbaugh. I, prior to coming to the county, I served as an Aviation Maintenance Officer, which gives me a strong belief in doing maintenance right the first time. Whether it is aircraft or vehicles, properly performed maintenance keeps people safe and able to do their jobs. In addition to being a manager, I was a maintenance test pilot. I performed the first flights after major maintenance to validate the work and airworthiness of the helicopter. It was a tangible way for me to demonstrate my confidence in the quality of work we did, both the customers and the mechanics. I'm a strong proponent of preventative maintenance, inspect equipment in accordance with manufacturer's schedules to identify deficiencies and repair before failure. This accomplishes two things. It keeps equipment availability high to better serve the community, and it controls costs by fixing minor defects before they become major problems. My experience in the military was not limited to aircraft. I also had experience maintaining support equipment, including trucks, forklifts, generators, and trailers. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve as the county's Fleet Service Manager. I see fleet as a partnership with customer offices and departments. The job is to provide safe vehicles and equipment in a cost-effective manner to serve the community. I see my job as resourcing the employees and the fleet team to do their jobs, keeping equipment on the road and communicating to customers. I'm looking to focus efforts on current initiatives to realize cost savings and gain efficiencies. In 2018, we incorporated a propane filling station at the county's fuel island at Tilly. It's a proven solution for light truck fleets to reduce operating costs, and we are currently seeing lower fuel costs as well as reduced carbon emissions. I'm working to effectively communicate savings opportunities to customers to make informed decisions on operating on propane auto gas. I'm also emphasizing, also emphasizing maximizing the benefit of our current telematics program. These are GPS units which transmit vehicle data over commercial data networks. This provides data for both fleet and customer offices and departments. This program enhances employee safety, provides data to manage operations, and provides information to right-size and optimize the county fleet. I appreciate this opportunity and the support I have received in taking this position.
Don't walk away. Questions or comments, Ty?
Bruce, we've only met a couple of times. I wasn't aware of your impressive resume and credentials and experience, and I'm honored to have somebody of your caliber on the team, so welcome aboard and hope to work more with you in the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, I guess the only thing I'd say is I know a little bit about helicopters, and a little bit I know is I know they fall out of the sky if they don't work quite right. So when you take one for a test after it's been worked on, that's gutsy. Anyway, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Because he bought one for a dollar once, ten years ago, didn't you?
I did have a helicopter program when I was Sheriff, so I'll have to talk about that.
So your master's is in physics?
Physics, yes.
So it is rocket science. Number one, I want to tell you how much me and my family appreciate all the years of dedicated service you gave, knowledge of the men and women under your command, but also our country. And what a great asset you are to Thurston County.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So I welcome you, Bruce. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation is from our Civil Engineer Matt Lonselman regarding a Mullen Road project.
And I'm not going to give you my resume after hearing this. Public Works is excited today to share with you some information regarding an upcoming project we have on Mullen Road. The project limits are actually going to, excuse me, going to extend from where the city of Lacey left off five, six years ago in front of Timberline High School, and the project will extend all the way east of Carpenter Road by about 500 feet. April and other communications staff put together a nice little video on the current conditions of Mullen Road, so you guys can see what we're up against. Believe it or not, I didn't, but...
Believe it or not.
But the video clearly demonstrates that this project needs to be, needs to direct improvements, not just at pedestrians. We need to be looking at the schoolchildren, the pedestrians, as well as drivers. So nearly 2,700 students obtained, or obtained, attend the three schools in this corridor, and they all use this, or a lot of them use this as a walking route to get to and from Timberline High School, Woodland Elementary, or Lakes Elementary. On this schematic, you can see our proposed project cross-section, which includes nine-foot sidewalks on both sides of the roadway for the kids to walk to and from school on. It also includes a five-lane bicycle lane in each direction and a single travel lane. Other highlights are street lighting, because much of the, much, much of the year, students are walking to and from schools in low-light, low-light conditions. You'll also see that there's water and sewer utilities in this cross-section, and that's because the city of Lacey is essentially a joint partner in this project with us, in that they're paying for all the water and the sewer to go all the way through to project limits. And then you'll see all the private utilities. What's difficult about this project is that we actually have eight or nine private utilities that have to be relocated before we can even begin our work, which sometimes can be extremely To address, to address the traffic congestion that you saw at Carpenter and Mullen Road, as well as the collision history, we're going to be, excuse me, we're going to be installing a single, a single-lane roundabout at that intersection. So the, the roundabout will not only address the congestion, but also address the safety issues as well. Roundabouts are proven to reduce collisions by more than 50%, and they are also, just as importantly, reducing the severity of the collisions. So emergency responders will tell you that the injury collisions are less frequent at a roundabout intersection compared to a high-speed intersection where one movement is free and the other is stopped. So what does all this mean? So later on in today's agenda, we're going to be requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners, permission to execute some funding agreements, as well as permission to advertise the project. So by the time we advertise the projects, award the projects, we're looking at early fall before we can have a contractor onboard, which means more than likely, we won't be seeing any dirt moving out there until after the first of the year. And like I said, the project's expected to take two years, and that's because of the limited right-of-way that the contractor has to work in. So on one side of the roadway, you have wetlands. On the other side, you have Lake Patterson, and then you also have a bunch of homes that are in really close proximity of the road. So the contractor has to essentially build this roadway section and allow single-lane traffic as well. And that's difficult to do when you have 12,000 vehicles driving through a construction zone with one lane of alternating traffic. The bottom line is the traveling public needs to expect delays. To compound this issue is there's no good detour routes through to project limits. You either have to go all the way up Riddle to Pacific Avenue and then back down on Carpenter, which on Google Maps, I think under good conditions, was 14 minutes and six miles. The other logical route would be to head south down to Yelm Highway and then back up on Marvin. That was 14 minutes as well and eight miles. So there is no good alternative route through the project, and the contractor's really restricted because of the amount of room they have to work in. So April's going to come up and talk a little bit about what we're doing to get out in front of some of these delays.
Hi, April.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. How are you doing today?
Great, thank you.
Good. Well, as Matt said, this project's going to have a large impact on commuters and families in the Mullen Road area. And our strategy so far has been to get word out and get word out early. Also, to meet with our stakeholders, we've already had meetings with intercity transit, with Lakeside, Lakeshore Elementary, Lakes Elementary, and also the transportation, the Transportation Division of North Thurston School District. We'll have more meetings in the next few months, and we'll be working with them to do things like make sure the information about the projects in back-to-school newsletters, make sure we have flyers on the buses, so that people are aware this is going to be happening. We'll also have one more open house in September, and construction signs up on the corridor early before the project begins. We'll be working to educate county staff as well on the project so that everyone can answer questions when we have call-ins. Also, we have an updated website with the information so that it's easily searchable on Google and can be easily read on mobile devices. And as well, we'll also be doing some public, some public outreach that we'll be working with Megan and the County Public Information Office on.
Questions or comments?
No. April, I think you got it covered. Picture's worth a thousand words, and you took some pictures on that video. Okay.
April, real quick. You were walking away. The, I saw at least five intercity transit buses in your video. What was, I mean, how are they, did you get a sense of how concerned they are, or how they're going to be able to manage, given the lack of detour routes? The trouble I see is that buses are often, routes are timed with other routes, and people are commuting, and it could, it could create a ripple effect that would be even more disruptive than to, for example, a school bus or a regular private commuter.
Absolutely. And one of the first stakeholders we reached out to on this project was intercity transit, because they do have six bus stops through our project limits. And so we've been working with intercity transit on what we're going to do for temporary stops, because it's challenging, because the contractor's going to have to be shifting back and forth across the road, and intercity transit's going to have to maintain that service at the same time. So once we have the contractor onboard, we're going to get the contractor with intercity transit, and we have requirements in our contract specifications that says that we, that contractor will be responsible for maintaining bus service throughout the project limits.
And when you talked about the single lane, there's going to be a single lane going both ways?
No.
Or how, I'm sorry, one single lane for both ways is what I mean?
Exactly.
Like where you have the flaggers?
Yep.
That let one way go through and then the other way go through?
And I could expand upon that a little bit, is, so the requirement in the contract specifications is that they can only do that during working hours. So on, once the contractor leaves the site, the roadway has to be restored to two lanes of traffic.
So during, and I guess what I'm thinking about is consistency, because, you know, like if you're, if you're a commuter by bus and you know that the delay is, there's going to be an X amount of delay, it might be manageable if that's going to be consistent from day to day or week to week in term, rather than it just being all over the place, and you can't ever know when your bus is going to arrive or not arrive. Sounds like what you're saying is that's going to be kind of the consistent pattern throughout the, a big chunk of the project. Is that right?
That is, and like, intercity transit's actually looking at mitigated, mitigative measures such as like adding buses to that route to make sure that they're not going to be delaying times for riders.
Great. I appreciate you guys reaching out to them.
And you obviously mentioned intercity transit and the schools, but I know emergency services are all notified as well.
Absolutely. April and I have been doing the Mullen Road circuit, so we've met with Lakes Elementary, Timberline High School, Woodland Elementary, Lacey Fire and Police, the school transportation department, we've met with intercity transit, we're waiting to meet with LeMay and the mail service and the garbage service, because all these things have to be coordinated, because we can't stop garbage collection just because we have a project on this road. So it's really a challenging thing to do.
It really is. And I have only two more, two more items, and I'm done.
Oh, you're right.
At that intersection, as you're putting the roundabout in, are we removing any rumble strips on the approach to that stop sign?
The rumble strips will be removed.
They will be, oh, so you have a start. Okay.
However, I want to tell you, that leg of the intersection is actually the city of Lacey, so if the Lacey wants to reinstall them, they definitely could.
And finally, a roundabout by definition is still an intersection, correct?
That is correct.
So please, I encourage everybody, use your dad gum turn signals. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Now we move to item one on the agenda, which is the opportunity for the public to address the Board. And the Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public at our meetings. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and don't take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. So I would ask that, again, this is a reminder that this is the opportunity for the public to address the Board. We're not going to engage in conversation, question, answer, discussion, banter. The Board does not respond, but will on a needed basis, and the County Manager will follow up with specific items. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes to address the Board, and La Bonita Bomar, the Clerk of the Board, has the control of the timer up there. It'll count from three minutes down to zero, and you'll hear a ding at the end, and that indicates your time is, is used up. And you're not allowed to donate your time to another speaker. The Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. Please silence your phones if you have not done so. No comments that allude or offensive to a reasonable person. We ask that you please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, no comments that are commercial in nature such as a promotion for a for-profit business, no inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, discriminatory comments, and remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the Board on appeal or not appropriate. And all materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. So when you come to the Board, or come to the podium, rather, please introduce yourself for the record by name and about where you live in the county. And what else? There was one more thing. I will read off the name of the person first on the list and then the second person, so the second individual knows that they're on standby to come up. We'll just keep it rolling that way. So first on the list is John Pettit, followed by Terry Ballard.
I'm done installing someone else. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live in East Olympia. And as recent conversation has gone, you realize that we're on very different points of view about the building of a new courthouse. I had several concerns related to the courthouse. One of, of course, is an environmental issue, and I did just receive a response within the last hour or so from the County Manager. I appreciate it. There was a contents of a statement made that they had accounted for taking care of the culvert underneath this proposed site. Apparently, we decided to throw a number at it, not really with any absolutes, but like a $13 million figure. Having been in construction and a contract, I would tell you, when you're doing construction and development, you add all your cost. You add all your costs to see what your site's really going to cost. So a suggestion that a property that's supposedly worth $4 million by appraisal, that you might have to add another $13 million to deal with the environmental issue, now makes that property a $17 to $20 million property. It's not a $17 to $20 million property. So one of the things which I wanted to bring to your attention, I, I found it to be quite interesting is... attention, I found it to be quite interesting, is that from a Facebook interaction, which I ended up having responding to one of the Commissioners, but also with a city councilman named Jim Cooper. Jim Cooper says the county's gonna pay for everything. They'll figure out a way to pay him back. Well, I don't know anybody who offers the county's good credit to offer it to somebody else. It just doesn't happen. If the city's gonna do it, they gotta step up. But then I decided to look at the city financials. I'm not sure the city actually has the financial capacity to do it based upon limitation of indebtedness, the state law and in the Constitution. Currently, in their current finances, they actually show seventy-six million dollars worth of debt, which is more than the county, actually. And they show a limit of a hundred and seven million dollars worth of potential total debt load. I don't know how they're gonna have a project into this. If they're not putting money in for this project or if the county's financing it, that's something that doesn't work. The only other thing I want to touch base on in my continued battle against a courthouse is I want every taxpayer to be able to think about, and you need to think about this. That guy with a three hundred thousand dollar house out there, does he really, really need to be spending one point two percent of the value of his entire house so he can have a courthouse located there? I'm gonna encourage everyone to think about one point two percent of your value is what you're asking everyone in the county to do, including raw property, to give that much so the county can relocate the courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Ballard, followed by Shelley Dilworth.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Terry Ballard. I'm a thirty-five-year Army veteran. Retired in 2012. And my job skill was maintenance and logistics, heavy in logistics and for ground level all the way down to infinity, tanks, loaders, dozers, whatever. I'm here today to talk about this fictional septic fee that was targeted towards unincorporated and other parts of the county. It became with a false narrative, with a false agenda. In 2011, on the corner of Carpenter and on Husky, they created a dry well for the system, for the stormwater system. Since then, all of Tanglewild has been cut off from Woodland Creek. And Woodland Creek was the center of my septic tank fictional fee. Well, if my septic tanks would just leak, I guess they would leak into the three wells that I drink out of in Tanglewild Park, but they don't. Okay? And to further, from Husky on to Woodland Creek, guess who owns that property? We're talking Lacey. All around the Lacey crick, Lacey owns it. So guess what? Surface water is going into stormwater and it's contaminating into Woodland Creek, which is illegal. Hookup of septic into, hook up the septic or any other things into stormwater or even into sewer is illegal. Let me tell you a little bit about butt inlet. Okay? Here's lot. Lot filters out ninety-five percent of their, of the contaminants before dumping it into butt inlet. Okay? That works out to be about ninety, nine point five million gallons a day goes into butt inlet from their treatment plant. Guess what? Five percent works out to about four hundred and seventy-five gallons of contaminated waste. So they want you to realize that you can, you can use it for everything but drinking water. You can use it for irrigation. Well, guess where irrigation goes? It goes into stormwater. Guess, once it goes in, it goes into stormwater. Ground water recharge, guess where that goes? Into butt inlet, into Woodland Creek. Okay? And this is the most amazing thing. They think that I'm going to put children to wade in this stuff. Wading is part of their thing. It's ridiculous. Okay? You need to reconsider. And just one thing in note, it's not going to the lawyer yet, but I have a GoFundMe fund that I'm going to establish. And the name John Jed Powell might be interesting to you because he's interested in doing this. He's the Maytown guy that sued the hell out of the county, which is my taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Shelley Dilworth, followed by Scott Bannister.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here today again, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Shelley Dilworth. I live out off of Delphi and one hundred and first, but the fire station out there. I'm back again today to address some of the issues that we currently have with the Permit Assistance Office. I will say, I have been actively working with some individuals in the Permit Assistance Office. I'm not gonna bring up specific names at this point because it is an active thing that I'm working with, but I will bring up some of the things that we have encountered issues with in the past. One of the biggest things is communication. I'm big on communication. I communicate a lot. As you can see, I've been here before you communicating, telling you my issues, communicating to you, I think, in a fair, established way of where the issues are, what I expect, and what I reasonably can see should be the outcome. I don't get that from the Permit Assistance Office. Two things that I've heard from that office consistently that I find to be irresponsible of an agency such as this is cross-office and miss-office communication. When you're in an office such as this, where you literally impact every single person in this community, that is not an acceptable response. And the reason I'm bringing it to you today is because that should be on your radar. That is something that you do control. And the way that we oversee that as people of this community, of Thurston County's residents, property owners, is we elect you. And we have done that. And so I am here to encourage you to look into that and to look into why your staff cannot effectively communicate amongst themselves, why they cannot effectively send out correspondence to applicants that make sense, that are in plain English, and that are consistent, so that you don't have people going back and forth, jumping all over, trying to find the correct path to get a permit. I've been working on this process with this office for two years now. It is only barely becoming clear as to what we need to do, which should have been clear from day one and could have been, had that office been working together, communicating, and knowing what they were supposed to be doing. And it wasn't done that way. And that is your problem to establish and help the residents of this county do. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Shelley. Scott Bannister.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Council, I'm Scott Bannister from Yelm. I'm here today to talk to yous about the homeless. I was with Chef Snaza two weeks ago and we were talking about the homeless and he had said that he had offered to donate the old jail for the homeless. Well, I'm vice president of Yelm's Prairie Food Bank and God's Portion. And we're a 501(c)(3)(3) and we are willing to take on this. It's a nonprofit. I've already been to the city of Yelm. I'm gonna go to all the cities in the county to see if they'll all help with funding. I'm coming to the county to see if the county will be interested in helping us with the utilities, the water, to run the operation. I'm looking like I'm gonna have a full, complete volunteer staff that's gonna be open twenty-four hours a day. We're gonna hopefully have some counselors for drug and alcohol rehab people. There's a lot of families that are homeless. We want them to be able to stay there and be able to get a shower, get cleaned up, go out and look for a job, better themselves. I know there's a lot of them that want to. They just don't have the opportunity. So if we have the jail, we got a kitchen, I believe a small hospital, maybe? I'm not positive. I believe it's almost three hundred places that we could, three hundred people. We can feed them, house them, bathe them. I think I'm gonna have pretty good, Yelm's already asked me to be on their homeless board because of this and they're willing to help fund this. They want me to bring a proposal with what it's gonna cost and that, which it's gonna take some work to get all this together. I mean, I just started this two weeks ago, so I think it's a great opportunity to use a building that the county already owns. We have a problem, a homeless problem. It ain't gonna get any worse or better. So we need to start tackling it now because it's gonna start coming from Portland and Seattle and it's just, I'm hoping to get a meeting with each one of yous separately to talk about this more. Because I've learned in my past that I come to yous first before I come up here like this, but I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention, what we have an idea of doing. Is, any questions?
We'll ask questions at this forum.
I just wanted to ask.
But thanks for offering.
All right. But I will set up an appointment with each of yous and I don't know if yous would like the sheriff to be involved in it or...
We'll chat offline then.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Brian, we see if anybody else has signed up? That's all who has signed up on this sheet. We'll see if anybody's come in. Yes, no, we're good? Okay. That exhausts the list that I have. If anybody in the audience would, that has not spoken that would like an opportunity to address the board, you're more welcome to come up now. Good, we're done. Thank you. Now the county manager's update.
Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioners. I have three items for you today. One is, unfortunately, Ms. Dilworth just left the room. I would like to provide her with an update as she submitted some formal questions to you. We're in the process of drafting the responses to her questions. And you have asked the Director of Community Plan Economic Development to respond to Ms. Dilworth's questions on your behalf. So those responses to Ms. Dilworth's questions that she submitted early in the month will be submitted hopefully in the next few days. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Okay.
The second item for you is related to ordinance one-five-three-zero-eight. And in this particular ordinance changed county code six-point-six-eight-zero-five-seven, which is related to emergency ban on discharge of consumer fireworks. And the code, as a result of the ordinance, states the county manager, after consulting with fire marshal or other officials as may deem appropriate, may prohibit the discharge of consumer fireworks during periods of extreme fire danger. The prohibition shall be take effect one day prior to the date. Consumer fireworks may be legally sold under chapter RCW seven-zero-point-seven-seven. RCW seven-zero-seven-seven states that the first day of the legal sales of fireworks in the state is June twenty-eighth of every year. So a decision by the county manager to impose a ban on discharge of fireworks needs to be done by June twenty-seven. This is this week. So I have been in consultation with the fire marshal and the fire marshal has been in consultation with the fire districts as well. We have reached out to the Department of Natural Resources. They have a wildfire danger assessment. And at this point, Thurston County is considered as low. We have also been looking as to this next seven days of a potential significant fire potential. In the next seven days, either we are at a minimal or normal conditions. Looking at the weather forecast and the upcoming months, and the upcoming, and the upcoming days, there will be, right now, the high will be seventy-one degrees and it will be dropping to just about sixty-five degrees during the day on Friday and will go up to just about mid-seventies next week. We do have precipitation in the next few days ranging from twenty percent to just about fifteen percent with just about fifty percent humidity in the air. And we have also projected, forecasted wind speeds of just about four miles an hour to nine miles an hour in the next few days. As a result of this analysis, we will not, I repeat, we will not be implementing a ban on the discharge of fireworks this year. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Well, it's great news that the risk of fire is low so that we can afford this opportunity to citizens to celebrate Fourth of July. Just ask people to be safe and maybe be respectful of your neighbors. I know in my neighborhood and my homeowners association, we have neighbors with animals that don't appreciate the really loud firecrackers and veterans who may be experiencing, you know, issues. And so I would say that it'd be a great idea to, if you plan to shoot loud fireworks, to check with your neighbors and try to do it in a way and in a place that's respectful to that, which is what we try to do in my neighborhood, which is in North County. But it's good news because I know people really enjoy the fireworks. I know my family does.
Questions or comments regarding that?
No, sir.
I would just echo the same thing and encourage folks to find the public displays of fireworks are always fun and safe and sane and not in your own, generally in your own neighborhood. But be mindful of our veterans and animals. And that's what, at the time of year, we turn the, crank the music way up loud to try to muffle it, but it's better than nothing. All right. Thank you for that update. That moves us to agenda item number three, the consent items, A.
I have one more.
Oh, you have more, Commissioner?
Keep cutting you off.
Okay, go ahead.
One last item, but not least, I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Gary Aiden. Gary Aiden is a staff member from the Public Health and Social Services Department and he will be retiring. His last day of employment is this Friday. A little bit of background about Gary, he has combined forty-two years of work experience. That includes the first seven years with the private sector, thirty-five years with county government, which includes five years with, in Michigan, twenty-three years at the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, I believe, and the last seven years with Thurston County. The primary focus of his career has been on the development and implementation of affordable housing and homelessness programs and services serving those the most in need in our communities. He has been honored to, he has been, as his own word, honored to be able to work with elected officials and appointed officials here in the counties, well as in the cities and the towns in the county. The, he has been pivotal in managing the distribution of the last seven years of just about thirty-five million dollars in federal, state, and local funding through hundreds of contracts with our partners and nonprofits in the community that provide services to our cities and towns. Gary has been, again, with Public Health and Social Services for the last seven years and he has been certainly a great asset to not just the county government, but also to the citizens that we serve. And all these contributions need to be highlighted. From my perspective, I'd like to say thank you, Gary, for everything that you've done. I have been able to work with you for the last few years and I recognize the level of professionalism that you have on the work that you approach and the business that you conduct. And again, always with the approach, what is the best for the citizens. And I appreciate that from that perspective. I wish you the best. I'd like to congratulate you and have a great time and the bike trip with your wife that you plan. that you plan going to Canada, I believe. If you might come into the podium, that would be great.
That's why I was cutting you off, I didn't want you to get to this piece.
Gary, Public Health and Social Services, thank you. Commissioners, thank you for getting to work with you over the last few years. You make really tough choices on how to invest these monies that I've been involved with, particularly with my team, Tom and Keely. Kathy is not here today, and Nicole is on vacation, but you know, you make really hard choices, and sometimes the answers aren't really clear. And our job is to always help you get there and then implement the programs as you've made your decisions. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you, Commissioner Hodgins, with the SIP and the HHSC and all that process. Thank you. Ramiro, always wise, thank you. Thank you for your help. Robin can't get anything by you. You've got it down in law for your grace in teaching me all of the right things to do. Thank you for that, and I appreciate the opportunity to work here. It's been a real blessing, thank you.
Questions or comments for Gary?
What do you got lined up for the future, Gary? I recommend picking up the banjo if you need something to do.
Thank you, I'll think about that.
When you get some spare time, you can come down and volunteer, couldn't you, Gary? Just a little bit?
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you for all you've done, appreciate it very much. Enjoyed working with you.
Over your 42 years in the business, I was blessed and graced with working two and a half of those with you. And you provided great mentorship, insight, advice, background information, research information, as did your team, but this is, I'm focused on you, of course. And I'm gonna miss you, not only professionally, but personally, because we've shared some personal conversations, and I'm gonna miss that. But you're a great man, and I wish you the absolute best, absolute best, Gary, thank you very much. Did you get like a mug or something? Did we give him a mug or something? Do we do anything?
It's okay.
I'll get you, I'll get you a mug or a coin or something.
Wait to put me on the spot.
But however, yay! And Tom, you got, I'm gonna lean on you, you gotta get some back support. Thank you very much, and of course, the whole team, Keely, and all. All right, that gets us to agenda item three, the calendar consent items A through F. And is there a motion?
There is. I would move that we approve consent items A through F.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items, consent items A through F. Any discussion on those items? Any of them?
No, sir, we had plenty of discussion over the last couple of weeks.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent items are all approved. Department items now, item number four on the agenda is the Sheriff's Office, and this is regarding a JAG Justice Assistance Grant acceptance. I believe we have Under Sheriff in the room, do we? Is the Under Sheriff here?
Oh, there you are.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, sir.
City Managers, or County Managers, Thurston County Manager. Okay, today Thurston County Sheriff's Office would respectfully request approval and authorization for the Justice Assistance Grant, or the JAG-Burn-JAG Grant, in the amount of $114,927. The Justice Assistant Grant will provide funding for the portion of the Thurston County Narcotics Task Force Commander's position. The task force is dedicated to investigations and interdiction efforts of criminal organizations that are focused and engaged in criminal enterprise around gangs, violent crime, guns, drugs, and human trafficking. The expected grant period is from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th of 2020. And be for authorization for the sheriff to sign the grant.
Any questions?
No, sir, I'm all for it.
Questions, comments?
I just wanted folks to be clear that, because this has been a controversial grant in the past, and there were some immigration strings attached to the previous iterations, and I don't support those strings, but, and would have trouble with this if they were still there, but into, a court decision removed those, in their entirety, removed all those strings from this 2017 grant, and on that basis, I support it, because I know our sheriff's office needs the resources, and I support that. Hopefully, the courts can get it sorted out for 2018, and I'm just crossing my fingers on that, but I'm fully supportive of this.
It was the 2017 grant that finally was released by the State Department of Commerce.
Right.
And that's all we're dealing with on this motion.
Thank you, Under Sheriff. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve acceptance of the Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $114,927, and authorize the sheriff to sign for the grant.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Justice Assistance Grant? Any further discussion? No, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries, thank you, sir.
And just for the record, we won't be starting any helicopter program in the near future.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the support out on Mullen Road, because we have had a few close calls, plus car pedestrians with some kids, so it'd be a huge improvement.
Yeah, well, it'll be a big improvement, that's why the rumble strip we put in to begin with, I believe. I believe, just one, thank you, sir. Agenda item number five, Public Defense, approval of the contract with the State of Washington, Public Defense. Jose, how are you, sir?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ramiro, Robin, LaBonita. I am Jose Vargas, and the Fiscal Manager for the Thurston County Public Defense, and I'm here today to respectfully request authorization for the Director of the Public Defense to execute a contract with the State of Washington Office of Public Defense for indigent dependency and termination defense legal work in Thurston County Juvenile Court from July 1st of 2019 through June 30th, 2020. The contract is for not to exceed the amount of $159,756 annually, and it will be paid by OPD, Office of Public Defense, in arrears by $11,479 for attorney services, and an additional $1,834 for county-wide administrative services that we also provide for them.
Okay. Questions, comments?
No, I ask this one.
No, sir, we've discussed this one many times also.
Now, is there a motion?
I would move to authorize the Director of Public Defense to execute a contract with the State of Washington Office of Public Defense for indigent dependency and termination defense legal work in Thurston County Juvenile Court from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with the State of Washington Office of Public Defense. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you, sir.
Agenda item number six, Public Health and Social Services, ordinance to amend Henderson Inlet Shellfish Protection District and the Squali Reach Shellfish Protection District. Environmental Health Division Director Art Starry.
Thank you. As you've indicated, I'm Art Starry, the Environmental Health Division Director, and the ordinance that you're being asked to approve is basically to respond to a shellfish downgrade in the Henderson Inlet Shellfish Harvesting Area. So just a bit of history, in 2001, there was actually a big downgrade in Henderson Inlet for commercial shellfish harvesting, and over the past several years, the good news is that collective effort by the county, citizens, the cities, and others have, and stakeholders out in the area have managed to actually upgrade up 366 acres of shellfish harvesting area over the past few years. However, there's some bad news, and that was that last year, the State Department of Health downgraded 30 acres of shellfish harvesting area. And state law requires us to develop a response plan in order to try to address the problems that led to that downgrade. And I could give you all the RCWs and stuff, but that's kind of boring. So what happened is, over the past several months, there's been a stakeholders group, which is actually the, an existing stakeholder group, the Nisqually Reach and Henderson Inlet Shellfish District Combined Stakeholder Group, developed a response strategy, and it looks kind of like this, and it's attached to the board packet, and it identifies a variety of actions that'll actually help to address the shellfish harvesting area. One of the key things that they're focusing on, or the recommendations on are having to do with two small tributaries to Henderson Inlet, which seem to be the kind of primary culprits, Dobbs and Fleming Creek. So there's a list of activities in the plan, including the focusing on that, and the good news is that the county's been able to obtain some resources to actually start working on those areas already. So I think we're a little bit ahead of the game as far as responding to those, so that's some good news. So what this does was, the ordinance would allow you to basically adopt the recommendations in the response plan and make them as, append or modify an existing work plan that was developed over the years, and most recently modified in 2017. And there's several actions there, I could go over them if you want, but we reviewed them this morning. And so in reviewing this with legal counsel, they believe that the best way to do this is actually to have you adopt an ordinance to basically recognize that plan and then the recommendations in it. So I'm asking you to approve that today. If you do approve it, we will attempt to implement that plan as resources allow. We've been fortunate, we've received grants, there's some other funding that might be available, but it, you know, we basically can only do what we can afford, and so if folks are wondering, well, is this gonna be a big tax or something like that, it isn't gonna be imposing any new fees or regu, anything, any new fees or things, but we will try to get grants and things to implement this as we can. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to approve the ordinance.
All right, questions, comments?
And where would the public go to view this plan, if they wanted to look at it?
Right now, it's actually attached to, if they were to go and look at the board agenda, it's attached to this agenda item, but I can also, it'll also be posted on our department website if people want to look at it there. And there's also, the county has a shellfish webpage, and we'll, I'll make sure that it's there if it's not there already.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
I support the ordinance, thanks, Art, and I just, I said this morning, but I'll repeat it this afternoon, that I, I'm glad we're putting this special attention to Henderson Inlet and the Nisqually Reach. I wish we had the resources to be putting similar attention to all of our inlets and waterways, because even if there weren't shellfish beds there, I would not want these types of water quality problems to be, you know, issuing out in a Puget Sound. So it's great we have this program, but it almost, you know, I think it's a message to all of us to look at what we're doing and why we're not putting that same level of attention to our entire waterway. We have a very unique position in Thurston County with our four inlets, or five across...
Yeah, it depends on who, yeah, half of one.
Half of one and the other, but I mean, we essentially have a very unique water, a water line, a shoreline scheme, and we have a special responsibility to protect that, and we should be doing this kind of effort across the board, in my view.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to discuss any options that you want to consider in the future, but right now, we're looking at this one.
Ditto to my seatmates, go ahead, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the ordinance to amend the Henderson Inlet Shellfish Protection District and the Squali Reach Shellfish Protection District Consolidated Work Program and the Henderson Inlet Closure Response Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, did you, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Oh, simultaneous, wow. Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Art.
Okay, thank you very much.
That was 6A, 6B, Approval of Thurston County Professional Services Agreement with Contractors of the High School Transition Community. Okay, we got Jennifer Popchak-Akim. Yay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Popchak-Akim, and I'm the Social Services Manager, and I'm here on behalf of the Developmental Disabilities Program, and I'm going to ask that you move to approve professional services agreement for five providers that we have that provide services for individuals with developmental disabilities in Thurston-Mason County. Those services are individual-supported employment, community inclusion, and high school transition. As far as high school transition, we work with students in local high schools ages 20 to 21, and we have a number of things that we do to prepare them for jobs upon graduation. And for individual-supported employment, it's a continuation of that, where we work with adults, and they get services to obtain and retain jobs. So there's coaching, there's employment support, on-the-job training, et cetera. And then community inclusion is a service that we provide through the providers in the community to get individuals with developmental disabilities out into the community to gain independence, so that they can live more independently and develop relationships and interests in, become part of our community. So we work with five providers, we cover both Thurston and Mason for our Developmental Disabilities Program.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Oh, keep up the good work, thank you. Thank you, Jen.
We talked about it at length this morning.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I would move to approve Thurston-Mason County's Developmental Disabilities Professional Service Agreement with Career Quest, Center Force, Exceptional Foresters, EFI, Morningside, and Vedus, to provide support, employment, high school transition, and community inclusion services for the period of July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020, and to authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign these agreements and any future amendments that do not change the duration or compensation by more than 10%.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you, Jennifer. Item number seven, Central Services, the Triage Restroom Repair Bid.
Do you need to make an announcement about the public hearing?
Make an, Commissioner, you may want to make an announcement about the...
Okay, then.
Not just to follow up to the meeting, perhaps?
We have a public hearing scheduled to begin a minute ago at 3:00, and that's gonna be way later postponed until we get this agenda or this commission meeting done. That's for everybody, if you're watching or you're here for that, just give us a few more minutes. Thank you. So, Michael?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Michael Chrome, Capital Project Manager with Central Services. I'm here today to talk to you about the, to ask you to award the bid for the Triage Restroom Repair. This project will remove and replace water-damaged existing wall and floor covering finishes with new tile at the Mason, Thurston-Mason Mental Health Triage Center Restrooms. Additional work will include a shower trench drain at the accessible shower and a new curb at the second shower, as well as some covers for the air conditioning and ventilation system in the room. On June 10th, 2019, five bids were received, the apparent most bidder received from Able General Contracting of Lakewood, Washington, in the amount of $49,950. We recommend that you award the contract to Able General Contracting in the amount not to exceed $60,054.89, which includes the base bid, Washington State Sales Tax, and a 10% contingency for unforeseen conditions. The engineer's estimate was $50,000 to $75,000. The project will be funded from the Maintenance and Operation Fund, and will be reimbursed by the Thurston-Mason Behavioral Organization. This project supports the County Strategic Plan 16 to provide safe, secure, and accessible functions, functional facilities to effectively house county services and the associated workforce. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Have any questions, Ramiro?
My understanding was this bathroom was out of commission, is that right, for a period of time?
It, we've got it working, but it's, yeah, it's in dire need of a facelift.
Okay, very good.
Anything?
No, sir. We've discussed this one as well.
Yep, go ahead.
I would move to award a contract not to exceed $60,054.89, which includes Washington State Sales Tax and 10% contingency for the Triage Restroom Repair Project Number 25602, to Able General Contracting of Lakewood, Washington, and authorize the Central Services Director to sign the contract and any change orders due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope, that do not exceed the 10% contingency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, for the bid award for the project for the Triage Restroom Repair. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Motion carries, thank you, Michael. Agenda item number eight, Public Works, Approve Project Prospectus and Local Agency Agreement for Mullen Road.
This is actually a follow-up to the earlier presentation. With this agenda item, I'm simply requesting permission to execute some funding agreements to release $2 million in federal funding upon, and then that would get turned into the Washington State Department of Transportation for approval.
Any questions, comments?
No, sir, we've covered this.
Nope, me neither.
Move to approve the Project Prospectus and Local Agency Agreement requesting obligation of $2 million... obligation of $2 million in federal funding for the Mullen Road southeast to Lacy City Limits to Carpenter Road Project CRP Number 61467.
Eight seven.
Eight seven. And authorize the Director of Public Works to sign the project prospectus, local agency agreement, and any subsequent amendments and administrative changes not to exceed 10% of the original agreement, $200,000, or an aggregate of 200, or $2,200,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project prospectus, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, don't go away. Nine B, Resolution to Call for Sealed Bids for the Mullen Project.
One more follow-up. So this item is requesting permission for the county engineer to call for sealed bids for the Mullen Road Project.
Questions or comments?
No, sir.
Nope.
There we go.
I would move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the construction of the Mullen Road southeast, Lacy City Limits to Carpenter Road Project CRP Number 61487, upon receipt of authorization from the Washington State Department of Transportation to use state and federal funding for construction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, Matt, very much. Agenda item number nine is CPED, Community Planning and Economic Development Contract for TRPC.
Good afternoon, Chair Hutchins, Commissioners. Jeremy Davis with Thurston County Community Planning and Economic Development. Today, I'm here to request the Board of County Commissioners to approve an amendment to the contract with Thurston Regional Planning Council for the provision of chief clerk services for the Washington State Boundary Review Board for Thurston County. The contract amendment would add $8,000 to the, to the budget for the year 2019, for a total of $17,500. Thurston County first executed a fee-for-service contract with TRPC in January 2018 for chief clerk services, and we come back to you on an annual basis normally to do a budget for the following year. So we'll come back to you in December of this year to set up the budget for 2020. The county is required by state law to fund the activities of the Boundary Review Board, which is an independent decision-making body that reviews annexation and merger requests by cities and some special purpose districts here in Thurston County. Actual costs have been higher this year too in annexation hearing process, and as required by our contract with TRPC, they provided us with an estimate of the needs for the remainder of the year, and has requested additional funding with that estimate. It's also proposed to allow the Director of CPED, or Community Planning and Economic Development, to approve up to $1,000 in additional funds without further board approval. Funding beyond that amount would require board approval. The current budget amount in the county's budget for the Boundary Review Board is $20,000. And this would implement Strategic Initiative Number Seven, which balances development with the preservation of the county's rural character and natural areas and open spaces by providing areas where the cities can annex inside of urban growth areas and accommodate our future population growth.
Wow. Questions or comments?
Just, I, I think you answered it, what you just said, I want to confirm that there's, this bump up includes some additional capacity for what may, what we guesstimate might transpire the rest of 2019?
Yes, sir, we've reviewed the prospective annexations that may occur in the remainder of 2019 with TRPC staff, as well as other expenses, and developed this budget estimate for the contract.
Thank you.
Anything, Gary?
No, sir. Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
I would move to approve a contract amendment with Thurston Regional Planning Council to provide chief clerk services for the Washington State Boundary Review Board for Thurston County in 2019, to increase the amount by $8,000 to $17,500, and authorize the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to execute the amendment and future contract amendments for an amount not to exceed $1,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the amendment to the contract with TRPC. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, sir, have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy. That takes us to nine B, Final Consideration Emergency Housing Ordinance Interim Regulations.
Ian.
Good afternoon, my name is Ian Lefkort, I'm an associate planner with Community Planning and Economic Development. Last Tuesday, the Board directed Community Planning and Economic Development staff to bring forward a final draft ordinance of interim regulations for homeless encampments. The, that final draft ordinance is in front of you today and amends homeless encampment regulations in the Thurston County Code in the following titles. Title 20, the Thurston County Zoning Ordinance, Title 21, the zoning ordinance for the Lacy Urban Growth Area, Title 22, the Tomwater Urban Growth Area Zoning Ordinance, and Title 23, the Olympia Urban Growth Area Zoning Ordinance. The proposed interim ordinance addresses Thurston County Resolution Number H22018, which declared homelessness to be a public health crisis. The interim ordinance was developed in coordination with Thurston County Sheriff's Office, Public Health and Social Services, Community Planning and Economic Development, and legal counsel. Currently, homeless encampments are permitted as a temporary use in Thurston County and the previously mentioned urban growth areas. The proposed interim ordinance would allow the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to waive certain requirements for the encampments upon adoption of an emergency resolution by the Board. A duly noticed public hearing was held on May 7th, 2019. The public hearing draft received 53 total public comments, 41 supported the ordinance, 11 objected to the ordinance, and one was just about logistics and was neutral. Staff have changed the ordinance from the public hearing draft based on public comments and on board direction. The key differences between the public hearing draft and the current ordinance include sanitary requirements, previous, the current draft now allows certain sanitary requirements to be waived by the Director of CPED with concurrence from Public Health. In addition, there are several changes to operations and security plan requirements. The current draft expands the types of acceptable identification to include fingerprinting technologies and other reasonable forms of identification. In addition, the current draft changes the requirement for identification to be a discretionary option for the sponsoring agency. The current draft also changes the requirement for sex offender and warrant checks to be a discretionary option for the same sponsoring agency. Also, the current draft changes the requirement that positive checks for those previously mentioned warrants in sex offender statuses automatically ejective individuals, that will also be a discretionary option for the sponsoring agency. The current draft also clarifies that only illegal drugs will be prohibited from the homeless encampments. That means it will still allow medication and legal. The current draft also removes the prohibition of weapons at encampments from the code. Again, this will still be allowed as discretionary for the sponsoring agency. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Anybody want to start, you want to start?
No, I don't know if this is the proper format at this point. Thank you very much for all your hard work that you put into this.
Dan, all the staff, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that, you know, this is a, homelessness is a regional issue that requires a coordinated regional response. No greater example of that than we had a citizen here, Mr. Bannister, who's a citizen from Yelm, who's out working with various jurisdictions to try to find creative solutions to this issue. And this is the first step towards the county trying to become, take, recognize that and take affirmative action. The effort here was to create a toolbox by which we could address a very complex problem. And it was my position that I wanted the largest toolbox with the most tools in it. Not sure what the county will do next and what, and the way we'll structure it, that's another conversation, and I'm sure it will be just as vibrant as this conversation was about this, creating this toolbox in this interim. But I think we've done a good job of going through the possibilities, what the requirements are, what the, what the, trying to look toward the future may hold, give ourselves the most flexibility, at the same time, reduce risk, which was part of the calculus that we, that we came up with in crafting the revisions. So I'm comfortable with this. Our board is working affirmatively right now with the cities on a structure for a framework for making decisions about taking the next step, which is going to be very important, whether it's a stabilization site, whether it's a developing permanent supportive housing with some new legislative changes. Those are all going to be good and exciting conversations, and I'm, I'm proud to be part of this board moving forward and taking these steps. So look forward to those conversations, and I thank you for putting all this together, Ian, and your staff, Jeremy.
The, there's consequences to every, everything anybody does. There's good consequences and negative consequences, and how nice it would be to be consequence-free. But that's not reality. But when I look at this in depth for the last couple of years, especially within the last six months to a year, I can believe there's far more positive consequences to doing this than there are potential negative consequences. And then with all the support from the other agencies and jurisdictions, offering support for those folks that really needed homeless veterans and women with children, I, I'm okay with this, especially when legal and risk pool weighed in on it as well. So thank you to you and all your staff for all the work and rework and rework as we went along as well. Anything further?
Yes, I'd just like to comment that I do have concerns about this particular ordinance. I, I do not see an exit plan, I don't see a process for treatment, both mental health treatment and drug addiction treatment. I know those are things that need to be worked on, and I just don't feel comfortable voting for this ordinance without everything fleshed out, and I realize that's going to take a bunch more work.
Okay, so motion?
I'd make a motion to approve an ordinance as interim regulations amending the homeless encampment regulations in the Thurston County Zoning Ordinance Title 20, the zoning ordinance for the Lacy Urban Growth Area, which is Title 21, the Tomwater UGA Zoning Ordinance Title 22, and the Olympia UGA Zoning Ordinance Title 23.
Second. And it's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance as interim regulations amending the homeless encampment regulations in Thurston County's zoning ordinance. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10, Emergency Services Resolution for Intergovernmental Emergency Medical Services Contract. Three seventeen, Kurt, just letting you know.
No pressure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kurt Hart, Director of Emergency Services. I'm here to request the Board of County Commissioners approve the resolution authorizing the Emergency Services Director to sign Amendment Number Two for the Emergency Medical Services Intergovernmental Contracts with the cities of Tomwater, Olympia, and Lacy Fire District Three for the purpose of increasing the price per square foot for leased space. MedicOne pays for leased space for medic units in these three agencies. The cost of this leased space has not been updated in approximately 10 years and is being adjusted based on the Consumer Price Index. The cost is within the 2019 budget and comes from the MedicOne Fund, and the EMS Council has recommended approval for this increase. This is part of the Thurston County Strategic Plan Initiative Five, Strengthen EMS Provided Countywide by MedicOne and Area Hospitals. Subject to your questions or request, the Board of County Commissioners approve the resolution.
Okay, questions or comments?
None.
No, sir.
No, sir, most of them, I have none either.
Yes, I would move to approve a resolution allowing the Emergency Services Director to sign Amendment Number Two of the Intergovernmental EMS Contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution allowing the EMS Director to sign Amendment Number Two. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Can you do it again, at the same time?
We're on the same pitch or something.
It must be. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Ten B, Approval of Professional Services Contract.
Commissioners requesting that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Emergency Services Director execute the contract amendment for Olympia Emergency Services Professional, also known as OES, for the medical program director, known as MPD Services, for the period of September 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2020. Additionally, to authorize the Emergency Services Director to sign any subsequent amendments that do not increase or have an increase of more than 10% or $40,000, whichever is less. Washington State RCW and WAC requires each county in the state to have an MPD, and Thurston County MedicOne has a contract with OES to provide MPD services for Thurston County Emergency Medical Services. This contract currently is scheduled to expire on August 31st, 2019. The EMS Council has recommended approval of this contract amendment, and the MPD contract is part of the approved 2019-2020 budget. The funding comes out of the MedicOne Fund, and this is also part of its Strategic Initiative Number Five, which is Strengthen EMS Provided Countywide by MedicOne and Area Hospitals. Subject to your questions, I recommend our request that you approve the proposal.
No, sir, no questions, we've discussed this one too.
Yeah, we have no questions.
Okay. I would move to approve the Professional Services Contract Amendment Number One with Olympia Emergency Services Professional, LLC, OES, for the medical program director, MPD, for the period of September 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2020, and authorize the Emergency Services Director to sign the amendment and any subsequent amendments that do not have an increase of more than 10% or $40,000, whichever one is less.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, aye. And motion carries, now you got me thrown way off.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. And now we're moving to item number 11, County Manager, and I think he's going to talk about the July 2nd POCC meeting.
Would you like to report on your--
Oh, yeah, do our reports. Do you have anything for the good of the order over your last week?
No, the only thing I'll report on is the biosolids issue out at Yelm. I attended a meeting last week, and the person that applied for that permit has withdrawn that application, so for now, that particular issue will not be moving forward.
Fire mounting?
Fire mounting.
Wow.
Oh, that's, that's breaking news, thank you for sharing.
How long you been holding on to that without telling us?
Oh, well, I can't talk to you guys.
Good answer.
Breaking news, thank you, Commissioner.
Wow, that's a, that's a, that's beautiful. That's wonderful news. Is that all you have?
That's all I'm going to report on for now.
I'll just tick off where I was, so people know, know what their commissioner's doing without going into much detail, because I know we're behind time. I attended the State Behavioral Healthcare Conference in Vancouver, supporting our BHO that was presenting on the True Blood Program, but I also got to attend some other sessions and learn about some other programs, like a new TCAP program that's happening, and we'll be coming to Thurston County through Telecare. Attended some meetings with a couple of groups on climate mitigation, early actions, and what the county might be able to accomplish in advance of the Regional Climate Mitigation Plan. I had a phone conversation with the program manager of the Kitsap County Lead Program and Behavioral Health Navigator Program to see what, what they're doing and how that might help us here in Thurston County. I attended the RIAF 14 Citizen Work Group in Shelton to, which is related to salmon recovery, to connect with that group, because I represent RIAF 14, as well as 11, 12, and 13 in the Salmon Recovery Council. I had a community outreach program last Thursday night with respect to the Habitat Conservation Plan and where we are with our, with our draft HCP. I did a ride-along with Thurston County sheriffs yesterday morning, and it was interesting, and I thanked Deputy Mitch King for being very gracious and informative and talking to me all about a lot of issues related to the sheriff's office. Over the weekend, I attended a viewing of a Build a Bus program, which is basically some citizens that are putting together buses and trailers with showers and laundry facilities that are mobile, that they can move around to different homeless camps. And they've got, they put a lot of their own money into it and hard work and labor, and if there's any community groups that want to help them, reach out to them, they're really, this could be a really interesting and valuable resource if we can get it off the ground. And then on Sunday, of course, I was downtown marching in the Pride Parade, which was a great event, as usual, and had a lot of fun with my kids.
I've got a full page, but I've only listed three things. Was Pride Parade on the master calendar for us? They were planning on going, but had to head east and west.
I didn't even see you, so.
No, I didn't get a chance to go.
I don't know.
Family Emergency came up, so I missed it. But I had, I attended a two-hour community meeting in the northeast end of the county. There are three major issues, were homelessness in the area, and a mental health facility wanting to open up in that area, as well as their personal safety. And so I attended along with Deputy Prosecuting Attorneys and Thurston County Sheriff Deputies. So that was a very meaningful two hours spent. And this last Friday evening, I was at Kamacha Middle School for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, and that is always well, very well-attended. Relay for Life, and that is always well, very well attended, with survivors, caregivers, and local resources and suppliers, financial suppliers. And then last evening, I attended the Tourism and Promotion Area Monthly Meeting that includes the Visitor Information Center and Visitor Bureau, all that stuff. Fascinating stuff with all the hoteliers and the stuff they track is very interesting to me. And then that was just the highlights of the week. There was a whole, like I said, a whole page worth of stuff, and that's it. Now I turn to the County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to do this briefly. Just a reminder for the citizens who are watching this meeting, the July 2, 2019, which is next Tuesday, Board of County Commissioners meeting in the afternoon has been canceled. So I'm going to be walking you through your combined schedule for the next two weeks. The appointments that are going to be part of my report is where at least two Commissioners will be present. You may have individual appointments on your individual calendars, and those will not be part of my report. Here, following up this meeting, you will have a public hearing related to the 2019 Housing and Urban Development Plan. Moving on to Wednesday, June 26 tomorrow, 9:30, you have a briefing related to the Future Capital Facilities Program, where they would like to present you with a different direction proposal. At 10:30, you will have a briefing on the Old Brew House Foundation, where you will hear some perspective from a group that would like to see some plans related to the Old Brew House. 2:00 in the afternoon tomorrow, you will have an update on the Thurston County Fair and Fairgrounds. And at 2:30, you will have a briefing related to the West Thurston Regional Fire Authority Levy that's be coming up here in August for election. Thursday, June 27, at 9:00 in the morning, you will have a briefing related to the Thurston Conservation District, and that is related to the MOU that we signed with the Thurston Conservation District, and they'll provide you with an update on their programs. On Thursday, June 27, at 10:00 in the morning, you will have your Commissioners check-in, and we will be putting, making the agenda available to 24 hours in advance. At 2:30 in the afternoon, you will have the opportunity to have a tour of the Emergency Operations Center with the Squaxon Island Tribe that is going to be locating on the Squaxon Lane, Shelton, Washington. And that meeting actually starts at 2:30, so we need to put some travel time in order for you to make it there. And I will also be attending that meeting. And that was the result of the luncheon that we had a couple of months ago with the Squaxon Island Tribe leadership, and I believe this is going to be a great opportunity to see how the Emergency Operations Center, they have going for us to learn. I may ask our Director of Emergency Services to, if he has time to attend that as well, that would be great to, for him to observe that. Friday, June 28, you receive an invitation from the Olympia Master Builders Association to attend a bus tour, and that is scheduled for 8:30, goes all the way to noon. And I believe you have individual emails, and I don't know if you have already made reservations or RSVP. I was also invited. Unfortunately, I will not be able to make that, but hopefully Judge Cummins will be attending on my behalf. And I don't know who has made RSVP, Commissioner Hutchins, but that invitation is open for all of you. And on Friday, June 28 as well, you have been invited by the Thurston County Office of Public Defense to participate on their summer barbecue that is going to be hosted on their parking lot. That will give you the opportunity to share some thoughts with the public office defense staff and maybe share a burger or hot dog with them. Moving on to Monday, July 1, you have nothing on your combined schedule. Tuesday, July 2, 9:00 in the morning, you will have your regular agenda setting, where you will be reviewing the agenda for July 9, and also among all the many different items, and I will be sending an agenda by the end of this week. And again, the July 2, Board of County Commissioners at 2:00 in the afternoon has been canceled. Wednesday, July 3, you have a couple of Board sessions hold. Those may be canceled depending on the items that we may receive. But also on Wednesday, July 3, you will have the opportunity to welcome new employees to the county at 11:15 in the morning. Thursday, July 4, the county is closed in observance to the Independence Day holiday, and nothing on your combined schedule on July 5. And that's all I have for you.
Good, thank you, sir. Questions or comments?
No, sir.
Anything further for the good of the order?
Nope.
Nope, this meeting is adjourned, and now we're moving right into the public hearing. This public hearing, the purpose is to give the opportunity for the public to provide any comments on the 2019 Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan. There's a sign-up sheet in the back. If you'd like to address the Board, please add your name to it if you wish to testify. You're given three minutes to testify. I'll be calling up the names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Time may not be given or donated to another person. And so now we're going to open, I'm opening the public hearing and ask Tom, to come up, Tom Webster, to come up and provide his background on this topic and explain the written comments and feedback and such that we've received.
Good afternoon. Tom, Officer, Public Health and Social Services. So this is our annual HUD Housing and Urban Development Action Plan. Every year, this is a requirement for two of the federal funding sources we receive from HUD. One is the Community Development Block Grant Program. The other is the Home Investment Partnership Program. HUD requires that we complete this annual action plan, which includes a 30-day public comment period in this public hearing. The draft plan was posted to the PHSS website on May 24 and has been available to the public for comment. We received one public comment by email from CEO, Executive Director of a local nonprofit organization who provided, I would call editorial comments on some wording suggestions, but not substantive on the actual projects themselves. So that's the only comment we've received. The total amount of funding for the CDBG program is $1,227,222. Those funds are allocated in this year to the South County, so the South County Mayor's along with the County Manager selected the programs or recommended the programs for inclusion in the annual action plan. That includes for the Boys and Girls Club of Yelm, funding for the Town of Bukota for water line replacement, City of Tenino Quarry House rehabilitation, work in two Thurston County parks in Rochester and Grand Mound area, and funding for Catholic Community Services Community Kitchen Program. The two projects for the Home Investment Partnership Program include funding for the Family Support Center Permanent Supportive Housing Project and a Low Income Housing Institute Affordable Housing, and those are two construction projects of affordable housing. And these items advance the 2019-2020 Strategic Plan Initiative Three, Collaborate with Community Partners to Reduce Homelessness and Implement Thurston Thrive Housing Strategies.
Thank you. So with that then, go ahead. Were there any questions?
Nope.
All right. Tom, will you check and see if anybody signed up to testify? Please, sir, thank you. Do you miss Gary already?
Yes.
All right, nobody's signed up, and so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close this hearing.
And this public hearing is now closed. Now, what is the pleasure of the Board? Let this ride or approve the resolution?
The motion was move.
Oh, moved and seconded. That's right.
Did it seconded or voted on?
Moved to close. Is there a second to close the public hearing?
Yes, second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is closed. The public hearing is closed. So now what is the pleasure of the Board?
I'm ready to approve these projects.
Are you?
This plan.
I am.
All right, let's have a motion then.
I would move to adopt the fiscal year 2019 Housing and Urban Development HUD Annual Action Plan. Authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to sign the HUD Form SF424 and approve submission of the plan to HUD, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the applicable program certifications, home, H-O-M-E, and CDBG sub-recipient contracts, and amendments for up to 10% of the approved project dollar amounts and contract durations.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2019 HUD Annual Action Plan. Any further discussion?
I'm just excited by the projects that are involved, and South County ones in particular, but also the home. I got to, by sitting in for you, I got to really understand what those projects are about, and it's great stuff, so I'm glad we're able to get going.
Comments? Questions?
No, it's South County's turn, and I'm glad they got their share of what's going on here in our community.
And this big wheel keeps on turning. All right. It's what's moved and seconded.
You don't mention one thing. You know, we're going to have a Boys and Girls Club in Rochester, Tenino, and Yelm.
And Yelm. It's a beautiful thing. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Tom. And then we move to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn.
I don't have to second it, right?
We're happy to know. In fact, there's no other business. We're done. We're adjourned.
It wasn't on the agenda, I thought.
You just banged the cattle.
Okay, all very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.